Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, so we are going to open the floor to public comment. If you have not filled out our public comment form, please do so. The form is in the back. Up first, we have Mr. Don Hake.
Is that live?
Yes, sir.
I'm here this evening to make a series of requests, namely seven. My first request is that the Board uses its legislative muscle and your bully pulpit standing to do the following. Mandate COVID vaccine for all city employees. Make public the city plan to have York declared a 100% renewable energy city. That resolution you passed unanimously two years ago. Third, research and begin installation of charging stations in the city garages. City of Baltimore currently has 20 charging stations in their garages and have been voted one of the 10 most EV-friendly cities in the United States. Four, begin transitioning the city-owned vehicles to electric-powered ones. Five, establish an electric vehicle day similar to what we have as Bike Night now. Six, outlaw the distribution of plastic bags within the city limits. Seven, conduct an in-depth review of the recycling activity in the city to ascertain its efficacy. That's it. I thank you very much, and I yield the balance of my five minutes to the subsequent speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Mr. Manuel Gomez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Manuel Gomez, once again, a city resident, happy to be here so many times in these chambers, first time wearing a mask, unbelievable. But here we are. I just wanted to speak on the so-called York Safety Net Surveillance Grid Proposal and the feasibility study that was made public, or at least disseminated via a press release. I expected more. I don't know if what was publicly released is just a summarized version of what's been spread for the public's consumption. If you guys have more data, or what's really going on. There wasn't much for us to sink our teeth into. There's not much we can do if a private outfit or a nonprofit wants to erect cameras across the city. But if they're to use city resources in any way, shape, or form, I would like to see much, much greater protections and explicit parameters for what can be done with the system, how it would be actually implemented, deployed, and whatnot. Many things that we can't really discuss here in this forum in an abbreviated format, but there's many, many things that have yet to be discussed and addressed with regards to funding, actual protections, what's done with that actual data. If they're going to do it on a private basis, that's one thing. If they're going to use public resources, even if it's just a fraction of a public resource, they enter into an entirely different domain of accountability. So want to make sure that council doesn't forego its responsibility. We're making sure that the stewardship of the city's resources are aligned with what the city actually wants to see and that we actually have some concrete feedback for what's actually going to be done with the surveillance grid. If it's to happen at all, myself, I don't want to see it be erected at all. I wasn't exactly pleased with the fact that we were trotted out to multiple areas across the city during a pandemic, and then to see a feasibility study that was so scant on details. I did like the fact that the NAACP was able to put out a very strong statement for us to center some of our discussions around. I agree with much of the statements in the NAACP's position, and I think that that's a good starting point, and we should take it from there. If council should have a resolution, I urge you not to move with haste. I expected more from the feasibility study. It's just not there. It looks to me almost incomplete, to be quite honest, not something that is ready for any action to be taken, in my estimation at least. At least should be considered premature at this juncture. That's just my personal opinion.
Thank you. Up next, we have Mr. Ryan Ritterhoff.
Good evening. I'm here to also speak on the feasibility study. Specifically, I wanted to kind of reinforce the abnormality of the study because what I've got here is the actual study from Montez Parker that was commissioned by Better York and also partly paid for by the district attorney and also the chief of police. And it's about 12 pages long. The full report is 40 pages long, but that's only because they included a completely separate study by the Gladfelter Institution. Just to give you a comparison, they're looking to raise $3.4 million for this project. This is a project that a company I worked for, CCS, did a feasibility study for, for a $2.5 million project. It's 80 pages. It was produced over the course of six months. They had in-depth interviews with stakeholders. There's actual hard data in here. There's lots of concrete numbers to dig into. That is completely missing from this study. There are no real numbers associated with any of the data regarding the survey participation. There's not real numbers associated with the breakdown of the responses to the questions. And interestingly enough, the second page of this report, or the third page, consists of a disclaimer saying that they have no endorsement and make no representation of warranties of any kind, express or implied, about the completeness, accuracy, reliability, suitability, or availability with respect to the information contained in the feasibility study for any purpose. Any reliance you place on such information is therefore strictly at your own risk, completely undercutting all of the work that was supposedly done in this feasibility study. A disclaimer like that is not present in a real feasibility study like this. And this was just to build a fieldhouse at a school, right? This is to surveil the population that you guys are responsible for. So really, more thought needs to be put into this. Like Manuel said, this is not the place to go into the, you know, the details about this camera system. But if you are going to move forward with a project like this, because I understand that the violence in the city is a very important thing that we need to act on. But that doesn't mean we do the first thing that somebody thinks of, right? We need to actually put time and resources behind deciding what is the best course of action. And this is frankly a joke. I understand why they didn't release this to the public and only in a limited press release because it's frankly embarrassing. $30,000 for this is about $2,500 a page, and there's no data associated with it. Now, maybe that data has been provided to you guys separately, but if it has been, it really should be released to the public so that we can verify the information that's claimed in here. Is that actually true? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment from the audience? That's okay. I mean, you can, if you can fill out a paper after you're finished, that'll be great, so we can keep you on. But once you come up, just state your name.
I'm Brian Hoover. I live at 424 South Persson Avenue in York. And I get tired of the people running around here on bikes, dirt bikes, constantly, all the time, right from my house. And another thing, there's a lot of potholes in the city of York that are bad, and I run over them all the time, every day, constantly, every street. And the streets that are now are being done by Kinsley. It seems like it takes a long time for them to even fix them. So I'd like to have them see if they can be done on property, get it done as soon as possible before the winter gets here. Thank you.
Hoover.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none. We are going to move on to our legislative agenda. It is 6:10 PM, and at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Ritter Dixon.
Here.
Walker.
Here. And at this time, I would ask you to stand for a Pledge of Allegiance, Moment of Silence. Thank you. At this time, we are going to take action on previous meeting minutes from July 20, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections from council?
None.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Our next legislative meeting will be Tuesday, September 21 at 6:00 PM. Agenda items are due by 12 noon on September 15. Moving on to our legislative agenda, we have a resolution approving the subdivision plan submitted by New Tech Design.
So introduced.
Resolution number 86, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A resolution approving the subdivision plan submitted by New Tech Design for 500 Lincoln Street.
Move to approve.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Council, any comments? Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes. And that is so ordered. Next, we have a resolution reducing the financial security for Habitat for Humanity.
So introduced.
Resolution number 87, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A resolution reducing the financial security request about Habitat for Humanity for the Habitat Homes located at 701 through 731 Chestnut Street. And it can be reduced to $32,930.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments from council?
None.
None. Any comments from the public? I'm sorry.
What was the discussion about?
They were just releasing security funds for a property. Yeah. Is that okay? Okay, all right. Oh, okay, sorry.
Can't hear you, hear you with the mask on.
Yeah.
I'll move this up a little bit. This is a first for us, so, sorry, for most, for everyone.
Yeah.
All right. Any comments or questions from the public? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes. And that is so ordered. Now, we have a resolution accepting American Rescue Plan Act funds. And that is so introduced.
Is there a motion to introduce by short title?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Resolution number 88, introduced by Sandy Walker. A resolution to the City of York accepting American Rescue Plan Act funds in the amount of $17,652,353.50.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. I'm just going to ask someone from, oh, I see Ms. Baldwin back there. Could you just explain to the public what we're doing with this resolution, please? Thank you.
Good evening. Do I need to say my name and stuff?
Good evening. You can introduce yourself if you like, maybe.
My name is Melanie Baldwin. I am the grants administrator for the City of York. And what we're doing is accepting the funds of the American Rescue Plan. And we have to accept them before we can utilize them. So we're just accepting the funds.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Councilwoman Walker, if I could just add, just so council knows, and the public knows, this is the first step where we accept the funds from the federal government. The next agenda council has in September, they're probably going to see where this money is going to go in the budget. So that'll be, that'll be the next step.
And no money will be spent without city council approval. I just want to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that helps the public, just in case they have questions in regards to it because folks have saw on the news that we are receiving funding, so there's a process that we have to go through. So if you have questions, please feel free to email council or email our administration. Any other questions or comments from the public? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes. And that is so ordered. Up next, we have a whole lot of final passages of bills. So up first, we have final passage of Bill Number 24, Making an Appropriation for Money Not Otherwise Appropriated. Move to approve.
Second.
Give me just one second here. Oh, no, that's okay. Yeah, that's, got it. And who seconded it, I'm sorry?
Ms. Judy.
Rivera?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And that is a final passage of Bill Number 24, Making Appropriation for Money Not Otherwise Appropriated in the amount of $13,833 for utility and water service.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments from council?
None.
Any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes. That is so ordered. Next, we have final passage of Bill Number 25.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Bill Number 25, which is a bill making appropriation for money not otherwise appropriated in the amount of $386,000 to fund projects for the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge Replacement and State Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any comments from council?
None.
Any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes. That is so ordered. Up next, final passage of Bill Number 26.
And that is a bill making an appropriation for money not otherwise appropriated in the amount of $754,000 for the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge Replacement Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from council? Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes. And that is so ordered. Up next, final passage of Bill Number 27.
That's Bill Number 27, Making an Appropriation for Money Not Otherwise Appropriated in the amount of $201,67 for emergency repairs.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from council? Any questions or comments from the public? Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes. That is so ordered. Now, we have final passage of Bill Number 28.
That's Bill Number 28, Making an Appropriation for Money Not Otherwise Appropriated in the amount of $50,000 for housing and eviction counseling.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from council? Any questions or comments from the public? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes. That is so ordered. Moving on to final passage of Bill Number 29.
That's Bill Number 29, Amending the 2021 Budget for the Loan Payoff for the General Authority.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from council? Any questions or comments from the public? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes. That is so ordered. Next, we have final passage of Bill Number 30.
Bill Number 30, Amending the 2021 Budget in the Amount of $700,000 for the York County Stormwater Consortium Port House Run Stream Restoration Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions from council? Any comments or questions from the public? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes. That is so ordered. Now, we have final passage of Bill Number 31.
Bill Number 31, Vacating a Portion of Lake Avenue.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from council? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes. That is so ordered. And now, we have final passage of Bill Number 32.
That's Bill Number 32. And that is amending Article 507 Booting of the Codified Ordinances to Establish Booting on Public and Private Property and Notice of Booting, Booting Fees, Enforcement, Established License Requirements, Qualifications, Prohibited Acts, Booting Authorization, Time Limitation, Complaint Process, and to Amend Financial Interests and Penalties.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from council? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
No.
Ritter Dixon.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes. And that is so ordered. Now, moving on to new business. We have an introduction of a bill amending the 2021 budget.
So introduced.
That's, that will be Bill Number 33, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A bill amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $50,000 for Habitat Humanity, for Humanity Chestnut Street Project.
That is introduction, so it will sit until our next meeting. Up next, we have introduction of Bill Number 34.
That's you, Lou.
So introduced.
Bill Number 34, introduced by Lou Rivera. A bill amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $36,350 for office supplies, postage, and software for the Treasury Department.
All of the introductions will sit until next legislative meeting. Up next, we have introduction of Bill Number 35.
So introduced.
Bill Number 35, introduced by Queen of Washington. A bill amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $70,000 for engineering services related to the Rex Laurel 5 Station Renovation Project.
Now, we have introduction of Bill 36.
So introduced.
Bill Number 36, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A bill amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $5,752 for the tuberculosis grant.
Next, we have introduction of Bill Number 37.
So introduced.
Bill Number 37, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A bill amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $238,750 for the Safe and Healthy Communities Grant Renewal.
And now, we have introduction of Bill Number 38.
So introduced.
Bill Number 38, amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $20,819.23 for the Safe and Healthy Communities where they will be receiving subsequent funds.
Moving on to item 19, introduction of Bill Number 39.
So introduced.
Bill Number 39, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A bill amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $180,620 for a prescription drug monitoring program.
Next, we have introduction of Bill Number 40.
So introduced.
Bill Number 40, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A bill amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $181, I'm sorry, $181,923 for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Cooperative Agreement.
Next, we have introduction of Bill Number 41.
So introduced.
Bill Number 41, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A bill amending the budget in the amount of $275,000 for the Maternal and Child Health Block Grant for Healthy Moms, Healthy Babies Home Visiting Program.
Up next, we have introduction of Bill Number 42.
So introduced.
Bill Number 42, amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $273,000 for federal and state funding via HIV Prevention Program Grant Renewal.
Now, we have introduction of Bill Number 43.
So introduced.
Bill Number 43, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A bill amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $20,989.27 for the Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program.
Next, introduction of Bill Number 44.
So introduced.
Bill Number 44, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A bill amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $226,568.34 for immunization and vaccines.
Next, we have introduction of Bill Number 45.
So introduced.
Bill Number 45, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A bill amending the 2021 budget in the amount of, well, there's a couple amounts, but it's for the Epidemiology Laboratory Capacity Enhanced Detection Grant Program.
That's a mouthful. And now, we have introduction of Bill Number 46.
So introduced.
Bill Number 46, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A bill amending the 2021 budget in the amount of $491,030.48 for the County of York Department of Human Services Children and Youth Families Agency for the Healthy Moms, Healthy Babies Program.
All right, so if anyone has an agenda, Items 27, 28, and 29 have been pulled from the agenda. So we will move on to Item 30, which is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the PA Department of Health.
Move to approve.
So introduced.
I got tired of saying "so introduced." So introduced.
Okay, that's Resolution Number 89, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A resolution authorizing an agreement with the PA Department of Health for Public Health Workforce Development Supplemental Award to Crisis Response Cooperative Agreement in the amount of $1,158,332.
Move to approve. Second.
It has been moved and seconded.
Did you want anyone from the Health Bureau to?
Is there anyone from the Health Bureau?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to speak in regards to this, please?
This is funding provided to us by the state to work on workforce development enhancement. So it is not specific to COVID, but it is as a result of the impact COVID has had on our public health workforce. So some of the funding from this is directly directed at workforce development, directed at workforce expansion, directed at maintaining the workforce that we have and adding to it. So that's the Reader's Digest version of that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes. That is so ordered. Up next, resolution number ninety, authorizing an agreement with the PA Department of Health.
So introduce.
Resolution number ninety, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. A resolution authorizing an agreement with the PA Department of Health for the ELC cares, carryover, and ELC enhancing detection, expansion, funding.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded.
Did you want anyone from the Health Bureau to come up again?
Do you want to speak on this, ma'am?
Again, this is funds, these are funds that are provided to us that come to us by way of the State Department of Health. They come, some of it is CDC funding, some of it is state funding. There's multiple funding streams, so they're trying to put them all in together, and they're attached to different base grants. So they're all attached to some of our base grants that we've already had funding for. So again, it's multiple funding streams, primarily COVID-related. Some different from the previous one in that this is activities that are ongoing for COVID response and activities.
Can you introduce yourself in the position?
Oh, I'm sorry, Monica Kruger. I am with the Department of, I am the Act Interim Director for the Bureau of Health.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes. That is so ordered. Up next, we have resolution number ninety-one, authorizing the sale of sixteen surplus vehicles, and that's so introduced.
Resolution number ninety-one, introduced by Sandy Walker. A resolution authorizing the sale of sixteen surplus vehicles that are all worth fifteen hundred dollars or less.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Mr. Green, can you just discuss this briefly?
These are vehicles that we have with the City of York for, they're on their last leg. I mean, we try to keep our vehicles as long as possible, but at this point, it's not worth us investing the money into keeping them. So now, we are looking to send them up to the auction. Last month, I came in, and the other vehicles that we did have sitting, we were able to push them through to go to Enterprise. Where they're buying them at, and they come back to a buyback program with us, where we'll see the money when we pay our invoices. The vehicles that we sell to Enterprise, which was last month, that will actually come out of our bills, that come monthly from Enterprise. So we'll save the city some money, and these ones will go to Mannheim Auction to be auctioned off. And so, most of them are sold now for just parts. There's nothing that we can do with them.
Thank.
Yeah, and City Clerk, if you could just, just a quick amendment to the second whereas clause, that should read, each vehicle is at most fifteen hundred or less, not at least fifteen hundred.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel? Any questions or comments from the public? You can, can you come up to the podium for us? Thank you.
Are the vehicles that are at auction, can probably people buy them too, before they go to auction?
Mr. Green can answer.
Sorry, we actually, we don't. We just send them to the auction. I know before COVID, we kind of looked at, and then we ran into COVID, we looked at trying to have it out the lot. But to be honest with you, we're just not car dealers, so we don't know what we can get off them, or what people are gonna do with parts and stuff like that, so it's just easier for us to sell that way and get more out of the bank, bang for our buck.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes. That is so ordered. Up next, we have resolution number ninety-two.
So introduce.
Resolution number ninety-two, introduced by Lou Rivera. A resolution extending the declaration of disaster emergency to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from counsel? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes. And that is so ordered. We do not have any requests for future meetings. Is there any counsel comment?
Yes, I have one. I would just like to share with our community about York County Economic Alliance's Yoko Blooms Track Two, their small business tune-up sessions. That will be August the twenty-sixth through September the thirtieth. It is free for all business owners, and they encourage existing business owners with over two years of operations to join in on the classes. You can find out more by York County Economic Alliance's website, or on our social media account, or giving them a call. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from counsel? Administration?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Yeah, I'm pleased to report that our team, most of, much of which is here, Melanie Baldwin, our grants coordinator, Mike Pritchard, our planner, and also Blandon Nace, our chief opportunity development officer, worked tirelessly to put together a really good survey so that we could hear from the public on the American Rescue Plan money, and what their opinions are of what, how this money should be spent. And the survey was completed last night at midnight, right? Last night at midnight, and we received eight hundred and fifty responses. So that's very exciting. We received five hundred and ninety responses from city residents, and that is approximately two and a half percent of the adult population of the City of York. So if you know anything about surveys, getting two and a half percent of a population to respond, to take their time to fill out an online survey is pretty good. So we're very excited about the results. And in general, the results, while we will be working now over the next few weeks to determine what are the specific priorities that we, the administration, as well as members of counsel who are involved in reviewing these narrative suggestions, we'll use this information to come up with specific items. But in general, the priorities are public safety. So this money is to be used for the safety of the public of the City of York, healthy communities and neighborhoods. So that includes parks, rec centers, housing, items like that. Economic impact, helping businesses and individuals improve their economic status. Healthcare, and finally broadband infrastructure are the five priorities. I'm sorry, I missed one. I'm sorry, number four was educational disparities. So how can we work with the school district, maybe some pre-K things? How can we work with the school district, who also received about thirty-five million dollars? How can we work with them to improve our educational outcomes for our young people here in the City of York? That was number four. Then healthcare was number five, and then broadband infrastructure was number six. So we will be, we're very happy that we received this. I pretty much agree with the, with the way that these have been prioritized. And by seeing some nodding heads, I think counsel's hopefully happy with the survey results and the, the, what do I want to say? The effectiveness of our team in getting that survey out there and getting responses. So we'll be coming back to you, council members, very shortly, with more specifics about the narrative suggestions that have been provided along with these general surveys. And then, it's time for us to really prioritize what we're doing with this once-in-a-lifetime chance, with this once-in-a-lifetime funding. So I'm very excited. And thank you all, thank you council members, and everybody who helped disseminate the information to get people to take this survey. This is probably, at least in my ten years, the most successful survey the city has ever had. That's all I have right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I'll just say it publicly, I did say it last week in a, in a meeting. But I was pleased to see the outreach for engagement from your department. Ms. Baldwin, the social media videos that were put out there, I really think that that was helpful for our community to understand more about ARPA.
May I add one more thing, I'm sorry? We still have another very important survey that has not gotten the attention that the ARPA survey has. It, while it, it's interesting, because the ARPA has a thirty-five million dollar potential price tag on it. While the Comprehensive Planning Survey could have a hundred million dollar price tag, but we don't know, because it's what we're gonna do with the city over the next ten, twenty, thirty years. So I encourage people to go to yorkcity.org and fill out the Comprehensive Planning Survey that our planner, Mike Pritchard, and also Melanie and others have worked on so hard. But I think we're only, we're less than two hundred. We're at less than two hundred participants in that very important survey. And again, this is going to help us develop, we've been going community, or I mean neighborhood to neighborhood, having meeting in the parks, having meetings at Rev Stadium, doing everything we can during this very difficult time to, to reach out in the community. But that survey is a key, a key point where you can have impact on the next, on what York City looks like over the next ten, twenty, thirty years. So please, yorkcity.org, and I think there's a banner right at the top. Right at the top, yorkcity.org, Comprehensive Planning Survey. Thanks.
When is the deadline? Is there a deadline for that, or is it ongoing?
That is, it's ongoing, but let's say it's this week. So that we give people a deadline, so they actually get it done. Get it done this week. But yeah, we're gonna be, this is going to be an ongoing process.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is all for our legislative meeting for today. Thank you all for coming out. Have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.